Evening, I'd like to call to order the July 13th, 2021, meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Barbe?
Present.
Commissioner Doan?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Paul?
Here, present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rainey?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Serrato is absent. He notified us prior to the meeting. And Commissioner Wyler?
Here, here.
Thank you.
Are there any questions on the July 13th, 2021 minutes? The action minutes? No questions, concerns? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes of July 13th, 2021.
Seconded? Okay.
I can second it.
Roll call.
Well, Commissioner Doan first seconded. Sorry, Vice Chair Rainey.
That's fine.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, Chair Barbe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Doan?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approve.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rainey?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Thank you. Vote is six to zero to approve with one absent.
And there are two written communications today? Adam, or?
Yes, there are two pieces of written communication that were emailed to you earlier in the day, and they're also on the dais. They both relate to item G2.
Right. Okay, we have one resident for an oral communication, Mr. Eric Ramon Calderon. Welcome. Yeah, and it's really important because we have one commissioner on the phone. Does that work?
Is it working? Ah, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, I got two petitions. One for Coronado. To the best of my knowledge, to whom it may concern, I, Eric Ramon Calderon, son of Guadalupe Victoria Berber, grandson of Jeronimo Matancillas, am writing a petition against Coronado High School, staff and students, on behalf of Orange Glen High School and my hometown, Escondido, California. We are seeking the expulsion of the adults and strip them from teaching anywhere in the universities and schools, with one year in San Diego County Detention Center, eight months good time with an essay on the Cesar Chavez protest. For the students, 365 days with eight hours of community service with an essay included. Also for parents, teachers association, PTA, and the United Nations Organization, UNO, to make discrimination, segregation, extortioning, slavery, or putting anyone in debt illegal in the state of California and around our planet we call Earth. Let's change our laws together. Vote for my first six-year term as Mexico's 59th president. La familia en unión. Mexico vota uni. Enunciando el reino de Jehová esperanza. And the second is for Palomar not to be torn down. To the best of my knowledge, I, Eric Ramon Matancillas Calderón Roarte Verver, am writing a petition for signatures for Palomar Medical Center on East Valley View Parkway not to be torn down. Renovated? Yes. This building is monumental to Escondido, California, and a part to everyone's history. I will not allow anyone to wipe our memories away, so I request for a change in the City Hall and nominate Stephanie Ali Cervantes, current resident in San Marcos, to run for mayor of Escondido. The current administration needs to be ashamed not considering the community and not voting as a union on decisions that affect us all as a family. It's time for everyone to reflect and evaluate what we want as a people, to have PTA and United Nations meetings once a month to give the next generation a loving, peaceful, and safe but fun future here on Earth and later on Mars as a true intelligent species that can and will make a positive difference in the universe to embark eternity together. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe there are any other oral communications.
No, there are not.
Okay. So let's move to the first public hearing, modification to a master and precise development plan, planning case number PHG 19-0075. Are there any disclosures on the part of commissioners? No? Staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Jay Paul, senior planner. The first item on tonight's agenda is a request by Mercedes-Benz of Escondido for a modification to their master and precise development plan. It includes the demolition of a portion of their structures, the showroom and the service bay entry canopy. Here you can see the Mercedes-Benz dealership originally constructed in the 1980s. It was the first building constructed within the overall Canterbury Place planned commercial area that now, that development and planned commercial area is now built out with a variety of Class A buildings and a bank on the corner. The Mercedes dealership has been modified over those many years. Here you can see the architecture of the structure looking at from the intersection of Ninth Avenue. Built in the 1980s, it retains a lot of that California Mission style of architecture. This additional building in the back was built many years later to house the repair base and multi-story vehicle storage, including roof storage. You can see in the front, the last modification was some more contemporary Mercedes-Benz branding elements here along the front. And this is the side view here along Canterbury. The existing buildings to, up to this larger building here, the canopy will be demolished and the new facility constructed in its place. Mercedes-Benz would like to include or construct a new, their new modern contemporary style called Auto Haas III design. You can see here more of the contemporary materials, glass, curved lines. You can notice the muted signage here, and the colors more consistent with the Mercedes brand, the blacks, the silvers, and the white materials. In the showroom, they have proposed a more open design with multi-story display and offices. Briefly, this is the existing layout here. It's approximately 95,000 square feet of total building area on the site. That does not include, I did include that, the roof storage on that because it's not actual square footage. This shows the area where the demo would take place here, basically the west side of that multi-story storage structure. The new facility would be located in this area here. They would build the new storage or service canopy here. This is the existing repair base that would remain. This would be the new multi-story, two-story office and vehicle display area. The front parking area would be reconfigured to include outdoor display and customer and employee parking, but mainly employee parking, or I mean, customer parking around the building here. The driveways here up front also would be reconfigured to enhance the access to the facility and line up better with the service entry in this location. A brief view of the architecture planned. This would be the north elevation and the west elevation as seen from the freeway with the glass structures. You will be able to see now the vehicles displayed on each story from the freeway view. Just a brief look at the floor plan, if you wanted to go back to that, we can go back to that. The signage includes mainly the refacing of the existing freestanding signage, there's two of them, on the facility, the refacing of the directional signage to reflect more of that, the corporate scheme, and a new wall signage. Staff is supportive of the signage. It's relatively muted and in scale with the size of the building. The project qualified for a categorical exemption, infill exemption per CEQA. Staff did not identify any significant environmental issues for this project. Staff is recommending approval of the modification to the master and precise development plan and adoption of the environmental determination for the project. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Questions for, to clarify anything regarding the application? Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, hi Jay, I just have one question. You showed the parking lot on the, on the north side, and there's two circles on the two sides? Right, yeah, right there.
Yes.
So the, the top right one in your diagram, that's where one of the pole signs is? Is that going to still remain the pole sign, or is that going to be vehicle display? I'm, I forget.
No, this will be the existing pole sign to remain. It'll be refaced, and this is the smaller one. Let me go to the actual signage. So this is the one on the corner, right now?
Oh, okay.
And this is the one, in the lower corner, it'll be refaced with this design right here. And I have a, you can see the photo here, the small one here?
Yeah, okay.
And the larger one is tucked in over here behind the tree.
Okay, so there, that's not vehicle display? I was confused.
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wyler?
Thank you, Mr. Paul. As far as the existing building where the, where the repair bays are and such, there's not going to be any further changes to the architecture on that side, just more coloring?
They will have a color scheme to match the new color scheme, but no changes to the?
But no other architectural enhancements? I mean, it looks like it just kind of blends into the new building is what it appears to.
It doesn't, it has more of a, I guess, a contemporary design as opposed to the original showroom building.
Right. Okay. Nope, I don't, I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions? Nope, none known from me either, so. Are there any, did Mr. Bed, did you want to make a presentation, or?
Well, thank you. Good evening, Chair Barbe and Commissioner. It's good to be back at City Hall.
I'm not sure you're, I'm not sure you're on.
That's okay.
There you go.
Chair Barbe and Commissioner, it's good to be back at City Hall here. I sat on that chair for 14 years, and I appreciate your commitment to public service. It's a big commitment, and thank you for what you do. Thanks for the opportunity to present our great project. I've been involved with the Mercedes-Benz of Escondido for 33 years out of the 40 in existence from the time Angelo DiMonte was part owner here. They have been a good business, also a good neighbor. We have been working with our staff. Jay have been a true professional, and he guided, guided us through this process with all the staff member and all the city attorney's office and engineering and traffic. And finally, after one and a half year, we got to this exciting date to get the approval. Hopefully, you will support us, Mercedes-Benz. We have Linda Francis from Dennis Flynn Architect, who are a leading innovative architectural firm who are specialized in doing national brand and automotive facilities. So the Mercedes-Benz has been an icon in Escondido, as I said, and they, as Jay indicated, the facility is outdated. An outdated facility means less sales, less revenue to the city. Mercedes-Benz of Escondido have been, have been producing hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to the general fund. And now after this remodel, we are expecting to generate hundreds of thousands of dollars more every year in sales tax. We want to make it a regional destination. The new owner believe in Escondido. He spends tens of millions of dollars to purchase the property and the dealership and also to remodel. This is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. I think it's going to be the first in the nation with that kind of innovation, technology, and, and to meet the national brand. So I think the additional revenue to the city will contribute to the better quality of life in Escondido. This is a beautiful, amazing, and inspiring facility. It is designed to meet the high standard of Mercedes-Benz brand, is, definitely qualifies for CEQA exemption, and it also, it is consistent with the general plan designation. It complies with all the city's regulation. Our goal is simple, to deliver the best customer experience in Escondido and the community. This project will make all of us very proud. So I am ever optimistic to get your unanimous support, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I understand there are two public members who wish to speak, and Mr. Doug Hicks?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Doug Hicks with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. One of the things I always appreciate about meetings like this is that you're here to assess the impact on the public. And I've heard about contributions to the general plan, but what I haven't heard about is the workforce that's going to build this facility. Every day, people from Escondido come, get up in the morning, tie their boots, drink a cup of coffee, and they leave. And they spend an hour in traffic. These kind of projects, if they're going to talk about community benefit, what is that benefit truly? It's good-paying local jobs. This is a facility that should be built by a local workforce, by an Escondido workforce. Many parents miss their kids' soccer games because they're sitting in traffic. Projects like this provide an opportunity for those who live here to work here and also be a parent, to be involved in their own community. The other thing that I ask is, they're asking for some amendments. They're asking for you to take a look at your general plan and say, this deserves an exemption. What are they giving back to the community? Are they providing good-paying local jobs? Are they providing apprenticeship opportunities? Are they utilizing a skilled and trained local workforce to build this facility? I would ask you today that when you're assessing this project, not just from the design perspective, but their impact on the local economy, the local workforce, the local families, and the opportunities that it could present for the city of Escondido. I ask you today to ask the applicant what they're going to do to give back to the community. It's not about a park, it's not about a general, a general fund contribution, it's about becoming part of a community. And being part of that community means I'm going to look out for the residents that I'm going to profit from. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's one more individual who would like to speak, Mr. Jorge Vieramontes?
Good evening, board members. My name's Jorge Vieramontes. I'm a proud Union carpenter and an Escondido homeowner. My daughter attended Palomar College here in Escondido, and in August she gets to state and, she gets to start in Cal State San Marcos, which we're blessed for that, right? This Mercedes dealership wants to make a presence in our community. If they want the city to modify these plans, what are they going to give back? The applicant should be providing community benefits. By that, I mean creating good local jobs for Escondido residents that they're going to profit from. How many Escondido residents wake up early and leave the city to provide for their families? A project like this should be a local workforce that's skilled and trained. What message does it send to the youth of Escondido when a luxury car company comes into our city and doesn't provide a real economical opportunity to our students? It's a message that you can grow up in Escondido, but you can't stay. We have to stop our youth from leaving our city to pursue real economic opportunity. Tonight, I'm asking the commissioners and the applicant, what are they going to provide real community benefits and opportunities for the skilled craftsmen and next generation? Thank you, board members.
Are there any additional questions or comments from questions of clarification? Mr. Wyler?
Yes, the, the previous speaker asked about exemptions. I think, I didn't notice that there were any exemptions that were being asked for other than there's a categorical exemption from further CEQA review. Are there other exemptions?
No, it would conform to the general plan and underlying zoning requirements, all development requirements. The exemption is the terminology used for the type of environmental review that was prepared for the project. The project would not result in any significant impacts to the environment that were analyzed by staff, therefore it qualifies for the CEQA terminology, a categorical exemption rather than a different type of environmental review.
Okay. Another question is, is the development asking for any funding subsidies from the city of Escondido?
They are not, no.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any other? No. Vice Chair Rainey, do you have any questions or comments? Vice Chair Rainey, can you hear me? Do you have any other, do you have any questions or comments? Guess we'll continue then. Okay, then this closes the public hearing on this with now discussion amongst the commissioners. Any, Commissioner Wyler?
You know, first I've got to commend the architect. I think this is absolutely a beautiful building. You know, buildings age over time, they become dated and need to be refreshed, I think. I've seen that happen out in the, in the rest of the auto park with several buildings out there, and, you know, this, this architectural change, I think, is well overdue, and I think it'll be a welcome sight on that corner. So, you know, I can, I can support this change. I, I think it'll be a beautiful addition to the city of Escondido.
Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, I just want to say ditto. I think it's, I think it's beautiful.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Vice Chair Rainey, can you hear me? I'm afraid we may have lost her.
I've sent a message asking if she was still on, or if she had any questions or comments. I have not heard back yet.
Okay. All right, then. I don't have any questions or comments further. I also happen to think it's a, it really is a nicely designed building, it's a great update to what was there. So would a commissioner like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Wait, I apologize, I, I'm sorry, she's muted for some reason, and I need to go into the control room.
Okay, so I wait.
I don't know why she's muted. I didn't touch anything.
We should wait then.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Pause.
Chair Barbe?
If I may, I think we should maybe give another 30 seconds, and if we can't get, get Vice Chair Rainey up on audio, then we should get moving again.
That's fine with me. And, and just deemed as absent, right? Okay, so we need Joanne, though, to do roll call.
Just bear with us one moment. Apparently Chair, Vice Chair Rainey is calling back in. Her line was disconnected, and we'll give it another 30 seconds, and if she shows up, then we'll love to have her presence, otherwise we'll have to move forward. All right, I think that's enough time. I guess if we have a motion in a second?
Right. We'll go ahead and, Mr. Wyler, you're going to make a motion?
Yeah. I move to approve PHG 19-0075 as recommended by city staff.
And I second that? So could we have?
Roll call, Chair Barbe? Vice Chair Rainey, are you there? Okay. And then Commissioner Wyler? One, two, three, four. Vote is four to one to approve with Commissioner Serrato absent and Vice Chair Rainey, not
All right, moving on to number two, the second item in our public hearing, general plan amendment, the housing element update, planning case number PHG 20-0030.
Thank you, Chair Barbe. My name's Adam Feinstone. I'm the interim director of community development. The item here before you at this point is the update of our sixth element, or six-cycle housing element. It covers the 2021 through 2029 planning period. It has been work in progress for quite a little bit of time. I'd like to, at this point, introduce our, a member of our consultant team, Dan Weary, from Michael Baker International, and he will be able to make a presentation. Hit F5.
Oh, F5. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. 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 Thanks. 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 Thanks.[621.34]
Throughout a number of different sites. We can have other sites that are smaller or larger, but we have to go through extra hurdles to justify those. And so we needed to do that. And part of that answer was including a program to facilitate and incentivize lot consolidation. So we have a lot of small parcels that are very likely to be consolidated. It's a typical trend and pattern. You see it almost all your development. So a lot of the older, you know, seventy, seven thousand square foot, some are even smaller than that, parcels will be consolidated into, you know, a block, quarter block, half blocks for future development. And that's already been happening. So there's some incentives in there that have been incorporated and proposed. They challenged our assumptions on the accessory dwelling unit trends. They, the recent trend has been up very significantly since the laws were changed in 2017. And in 2018, 2019, 2020, and so far in 2021, every year's, you know, been more and more accessory dwelling units, which is great. So it's had the intended effect. And I think the, we're on track for an easy eighty dwelling units, accessory dwelling units this year, and we think it's going to go higher. So we said, that's great, let's count those towards our RENA. And they said, no, let's take an average going back to when the laws had just changed, and we were just kind of emerging from the new law with very low levels. So they kicked us back down to forty-five a year. So we think we'll exceed that, and we'll end up with a positive upside in actuality. And that'll, that'll help create kind of a buffer for our RENA count as we go through the next eight years. And I didn't go into that buffer, but you may have heard it before. We have our RENA count, and then we want to have a buffer. And the reason is, is that the city must, all cities must maintain enough sites to cover their RENA for the entire eight-year period. If a site that you anticipated to get a hundred units on gets developed for fifty units, you've just lost fifty units, and you need to make that up. So you can use your buffer to make up any shortfall there. And so we've got a buffer to do that. And again, the accessory dwelling units, we think will kind of increase your buffer and give you a little extra protection. They also want an expansion of programs to help extremely low income and special needs populations, so there's a number of different programs for those, kind of building off your existing programs primarily. And to strengthen programs to affirmatively further fair housing, or AFFH. And that was a major new section this year. So that's, that's kind of the tail that's wagging the dog. It used to be a couple of paragraphs in the prior housing elements, and I think now we're up to about sixty-five pages just for that one section. So that was quite a, quite an endeavor. And we didn't anticipate that at the beginning. The law, the goalspost kind of changed along the way. So that's been interesting. So this is just kind of a list of some of the housing programs. I don't know if you saw this in advance. There's about three major clusters here, and I'll just kind of run through them quickly. This first group, one point one through one point eight, is about planning for quality managed and sustainable growth. Basically, this is meeting your RENA first and foremost, you know, what you need to do to do that. So we have a site inventory. There's new laws that require no net loss. So if there were lower income units in existence and they come in for redevelopment, we need to make sure that any of those lower income units are replaced in kind and then added The city has a really interesting program for density transfer. It's been successful, and we thought that was a really kind of novel idea, and we're really kind of exclaiming that to HCD, and they kind of went, okay, thanks, you know? We think it's a great program, and we're going to recommend it to others. Not everybody can do it, but you guys have been pretty successful with it. There's a new requirement for by right approval, or ministerial approval, so no discretion. And that's for projects with twenty percent affordable units, and that's affordable to lower income households. So moderate doesn't count. You'd have twenty percent for low, or very low, or extremely low. That's a new requirement. And then there's other requirements for, for again, by right ministerial approval for reuse of prior RENA sites from the prior housing elements, and sites that are rezoned to meet your lower income RENA. And those are rezoned after adoption. There's other programs and recommendations to emphasize the use of city-owned sites. As I mentioned, there's a lot consolidation program. There's new requirements to update your density bonus laws, that's per state law. We have a new upper limit, kind of a minimum, minimum density bonus, maximum minimum, I guess. So it starts at about ten percent, runs up to thirty-five percent. They've increased the upper bonus to fifty percent. And that's showing actually some real good results for folks that have already adopted that. Removal of constraints to development, that's looking at your development standards. You guys have pretty good development standards. There's a few little tweaks here and there that we can make to make it a little bit better. And then monitoring your growth management measure, measure S. The other kind of major group here is two point one through two point eight, is making sure that there's a range of housing opportunities. At the top of the list was your accessory dwelling units. We've seen a lot of good uptake on that. The nice thing about that is that that can happen anywhere in the city. It's kind of distributed, and we get credit for the, a range of household incomes, down to very low and low, which is really nice. There's a first-time homebuyer assistance program that continues. There's a essential middle-income rental housing program, that's great. And housing choice vouchers, I think we're looking to maintain the same level, and there's somewhere around a thousand, I think, in the city. It's a great program, allows people to move and take these vouchers to kind of make up the difference between what they can afford and what the market rate rent is. Mobile home park conversion protections, mobile home rent review, special needs housing, there's a couple of new statutory requirements in there from the state that we're going to make. And then obviously affordable housing development, providing incentives for that. And the last group here is enhance the quality of your housing stock. So a big measure is try to keep what you have, keep that housing stock so you don't lose it, and then also keep it affordable. So that includes rehabilitation. The city has a number of different programs to, to fund low-income household renovations for homeowner units, and that includes mobile homes. One of the things that HCD really wants to see is focus on particular neighborhoods. So they've asked us to kind of identify the areas through all the needs analysis that may be disadvantaged, or where there's particular problems, and try to target the recommendations and the programs for those. And then preservation of at-risk housing. You really don't have any. You've had one project, it's Silver, Silver Crest, yes. That's an affordable housing project. Most of these projects have like a forty-five or fifty-five year term, and their term is coming up, but it's fully expected that that will be extended and will remain affordable housing. And then, as I mentioned before, the affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH programs, there's a whole new matrix in here with new programs, and enhanced programs, I should say. So we also received public comments, and I'll kind of hit some of those. There was a request for a midterm, within this eight-year term, trigger to monitor development and create a by right approval program. The city is required to report progress to HCD annually, so as I mentioned, they call those annual progress reports. So you are constantly assessing your progress anyway, so there may be some redundancy there. One of the recommendations was to expand the site's inventory to high resource areas. There's, there's a number of different kind of algorithms and maps that were prepared at the state level that kind of evaluate the entire state and all the communities, down to the census tract and block level, and kind of identify areas that are low resource and high resource. And they'd like to see that the new housing go in areas where there's high resources. Well, that's great. But the way they define high resources is fairly narrow. It's based on education, income, and it doesn't really get to kind of the smart growth principles, which are more broad. And when we're looking at land use, which is, you know, access to infrastructure, utilities, transit, services, jobs. And typically, we see the high resource patterns being in the single-family areas where people have more money, they've got higher education attainment levels, and they get a higher score. But it's hard to put ten thousand units out into the kind of periphery of the city of Escondido. So there's kind of a conflict there, or a tension there. Let's see. One of the solutions is you're, you've got three specific plans, the downtown, South Center, and the East Valley specific plan, which are accommodating the majority of your RENA and units, the majority of those ten thousand units, particularly the higher-density ones that cover your lower income RENA requirements. And the East Valley specific plan actually is assuming a good chunk of those. And like the other specific plans, the idea is that we're not just putting potentially lower-income households or high-density homes, or housing development, in these areas and accentuating a problem, or exacerbating a problem. That development and redevelopment is bringing in new housing, and new resources, and new investment, and that's really what's needed to, to improve those, those areas that might be considered low resource today. Beyond that, we've got potential recommendations to mitigate development fee burdens. There are some comparisons, and depending on who, which other cities you compare to, you fare better or worse. And in general, I think the city is constantly looking at opportunities to streamline the process and look at your, your fees and make sure that they're fair. It's good to note that some of those fees do cover some of those improvements which are needed in your communities. So you need to make sure that, you know, you're taking care of your fees and making sure you're incentivizing development, but also making sure you're able to invest in those communities. There was a request to invalidate Prop S, which is your, your measure that says you can't upzone or change your development potential without a vote of the public. You cannot just unilaterally invalidate it. It needs to be done through a, a referendum, actually. And lastly, they recommended that you adopt an inclusionary housing program that was specifically studied. There was a sector, market sector analysis, and that concluded that it would probably do more harm than good. So you're, you're promoting a lot of development and investment through higher density and trying to encourage a mix of incomes, and, and you're actually getting a good amount of affordable housing, along with your other programs and your density bonus. With that, I'll hand it off to Adam for the final slide and recommendation.
Thank you. So Dan actually took a lot of my, my speaking points, so I think he jumped on all, on it all. But based on the information provided and everything in the staff report and the, the housing element draft that you've been presented as well, staff recommends approval of the, or staff recommends that you recommend approval to the city council of the 2021 to 2029 housing element update, the amendment to the general plan, community health and services chapter, and the environmental determination, which is an addendum to the previously approved EIR, which was done for the 2012 general plan update, downtown specific plan, and climate action plan. There is one additional modification that I did need to read into the record that would be made to one of the portions of the, to one of the sentences actually in the housing element, so this would be included in staff's recommendation. It's at the very bottom of page 103. And it is actually Chair Barbe, it was the sentence that you had pointed out to me that didn't make a lot of sense. So I had initially made one revision, it still didn't make a lot of sense, but Dan, Dan, as the expert on this, provided additional, or additional language. So the very last sentence there on page 103 should read, "As these vacant or approved units do not exceed fifty percent of the lower income RENA, the city, based on substantial evidence, makes the required finding that the non-vacant sites are likely to be redeveloped for the housing, for housing during the planning period." That will be changed to read as such, provided that the commission makes that recommendation prior to the document being presented to city council. This time staff and the, and the consultant team, as well as our housing manager who's here, would be available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, and thank you for a very thorough presentation. We really appreciate it to the both of you.
May have been more than you wanted, sorry.
No, actually, it was a fairly good summary, and also some of the changes, which I actually have a few questions for, but questions to city, yeah, Commissioner Paul.
Yes, thank you. I just have two items I wanted to ask about. One is the state has kind of pushed back on our plan previously. We expected it to be approved already. What are the consequences if the state does not approve our plan?
Yeah, the state, we expect that they will certify it. They have been pushing everybody pretty hard to adopt, particularly the affirmatively fair housing, furthering fair housing programs. But basically, you lose opportunity for funding. That's, that's the most likely thing. If you're out of certification, you're not eligible for lots of state funding. If you remain uncertified and kind of out of, out of compliance, and you're a really bad actor, and this has happened, HCD now has the authorities to suspend your ability to process permits. So they can take over. So if you don't play nice, the state can take that, that right and responsibility away.
Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, one of the public comments mentions it also. We have a first-time homebuyer program, I think it is, that only serves one family a year. And I, I don't want this to hold up the plan or anything, but I just think that's ridiculous that the city would have any kind of program that only services one.
Karen Yule, our housing manager, can, can provide a response to that.
Sorry, Karen, but, so that's just an aside.
Do you want me to answer that?
Our, our affordable housing, first-time homebuyer program has been rather anemic over the last several years. We are working, we've been working for the last four to six months with some develop, mortgage shares, to determine how we can change our program to make it more viable. But we've got various constraints by HUD, including kind of maximum incomes and maximum housing prices. Those maximum housing prices actually make it very difficult to find inventory here in Escondido. So we're working on methods to, to increase that.
If I can add to that, my understanding of that is that the, there's assistance to kind of bridge the gap for first-time homebuyers so they can afford, but the gap is still, even with the assistance, is still greater, or too great, that they still can't qualify for a loan. I think that's my understanding of what happens. Even with assistance, we're still, too big of a gap.
Other questions for clarification? Commissioner Don.
I do. I have a couple question. Thank you for a very nice presentation regarding the housing element. One of the question I had was that if, I'm looking at page number fifteen in the housing element. There is a table data showing the mean salary of occupation, but then it's a San Diego region. Isn't this supposed to be for Escondido, or am I looking at the table incorrectly?
No, there's a lot, a lot of data, and a lot of tables in here, but when they look at the occupations, they're not able to break it down.
For Escondido?
All, all this data is, so some like occupation, they, they look at more generally, a kind of a macro level. And then other data you'll see rates down to the city, and then it can even break down to census tracts and block level of the city. Some gets very specific and some stays more macro, this just happens to be more macro.
Okay. So when you're gauging at this number to make a determination of the inclusionary affordable housing, how, what, at what data do you base on to make that determination? Because if I'm looking at the data right now for this occupation, the whole San Diego region, the average is a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Now are you based on that to make a determination for the Escondido? That, that just, it's a little bit confusing for me, because, you know, I'm sitting here in Escondido looking at the housing element plan, and then I see the data for the whole San Diego salary median, so it's a little bit confusing. If you could clarify that.
The main thing that we look at, and this is, a lot of this information is more just contextual, to kind of give you a benchmark of where you are, you know, overall. The, the number that's used most frequently to actually make decisions is the median income for the county or the region. In this case, it's San Diego County, and I don't recall offhand exactly what that number is, it's probably close to the hundred and thirty-six thousand, actually, I think it's less than that. And the, when we talked about the RENA and finding a number of sites that are eligible to meet our, our obligations, they're broken down to very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. And that's all gauged and based off that area median, which is the county median income. So that's the number that, that you really kind of need to know. In this case, the, the salary by occupations, that's generally used to kind of look and evaluate, gee, what's the median household cost to purchase in Escondido? I don't have that number off the top of my head, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. Or the median rent. And then you can kind of look at, well, who can afford that? And you could go, well, you know, doctors, engineers, lawyers can afford it, but somebody working in sales, or production, or transportation and material moving will not be able to afford that without some, some sort of subsidy or assistance. So that's kind of how those numbers are used, and I hope that helps. But yeah, there's, if you read through, there's lots of confusing numbers, and some of these tables are, this is actually a fairly easy one, some of them are really complex.
Thank you.
Sure.
The other question I had was for Karen, and thank you, Commissioner Paul, for asking this question. I'm, I'm curious, what is your current program for the first, first-time homebuyer that you use that is kind of skinny?
So our first-time homebuyer program is open to folks earning up to eighty percent of the area median income. The maximum purchase price is approximately four hundred and twenty or four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which makes it difficult to find an appropriate home. We currently offer up to five percent of the purchase price, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. We also require that the purchaser bring in a minimum of one percent of the purchase price out of their own savings.
So one percent of the purchase price?
So the purchaser must have one percent of the purchase price. We will provide five percent of the purchase price, up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, up to twenty-five thousand. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. You covered a lot of my questions that I had flagged for you, so I won't go through those, but was wondering, and this is, this is more a question in general, in accord, or in reference to the memorandum and their section on updating programs for Escondido's growing low-income population, can you walk us through the sixteen, or sixteen programs they're referring to that were not, the outcomes weren't met in the last cycle, and how that transfers over with, how it's being addressed in this new one with the eighteen they're referencing this time?
Yeah, I think that's probably a little misleading statement. So we like to say you don't get points for the number of programs, you get points for results. And so we're, we, we try to actually cut down the number of programs. We actively try to do that. So sometimes they're consolidated. Some programs are kind of one and done, where they have a very specific requirement, we need to make this change. And that change is accomplished, and that program is done, it's met. And so you don't repeat it. So those drop off and those end. And so some of those were deleted. Sometimes people like to kind of throw the kitchen sink in with everything else, and try to make everything a program, and they think that they're going to get points with HCD. It doesn't really work so much, although they've asked for a lot, a lot more programs this round than, than prior. So, you know, sometimes there's things in there that aren't really programs, the things that you have to do anyway. So if it's an, if it's an obligation to do your annual progress report, or to implement statutory requirements from the state, you can do that, but if it's, you know, following state law or monitoring state law, we've seen that, that's a common program that people put in, and we just take that out. It's just kind of fluff. So some of those were just taken out because they weren't really appropriate, or they were completed. So one of the, as I mentioned at the beginning, one of the things that we do in the very beginning is kind of review all the programs and review past accomplishments. And that's one of those elements, is we go through each of the programs and say, okay, here's what was done, here's what happened. And so there's a whole chapter in there, it's fairly long, and it goes program by program and kind of takes those out. So, yeah, we were able to kind of consolidate, and then we expanded.
Thank you, and I, this is my first time reviewing, I think other commissioners might have, this is, well, they're, they're a few rounds in, I'm, I'm not so getting acquainted with the document. And then the other question that I had was related to inclusionary housing. And so of course, it's a bummer that it's, you know, it's not referenced in there. And then you mentioned affordability, and, you know, it's, you know, through the, through the different plans and whatnot, but I guess I wanted a little bit more understanding in terms of how our plan fares compared to other cities, and, and what we're seeing in terms of inclusionary housing, and why it's, you know, what specifically, specifically from the plan could be highlighted in lieu of that for us to kind of read over it or review a little bit more.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot, and I can, you look to your staff to help, but I'll try and start it off, I guess. Number one, you've been pretty successful. We, we were, as we were going through the needs analysis and your accomplishments, you know, we like to work for cities who are actually taking it seriously, and, and Escondido has done a very good job of really increasing your densities, and you've amended your specific plans, and creating the, the opportunity for that private investment that builds your city, right? The city doesn't really build housing. You might manage some of it, but it's rare that you, you actually build the housing. The majority of your city is built through private investment. And the city's done a very good job of laying the groundwork for that, both in terms of policies and programs, and your zoning in particular, to attract and, and achieve that development. And then also working with the developers when they do come in to get that affordable housing. So you've actually built quite a bit over the years, and in some cases, many more than some municipalities. So we thought, you know, we, there's, there's kind of good actors and bad actors. There's some cities that fight this tooth and nail. Escondido has embraced it and done a very good job. I know that's kind of a general answer. In terms of the inclusionary, that's a specific tool that some municipalities do, not all, I'd say that probably less than a third actually do it. And it's, the basic mechanism is that new residential projects of a certain size, some are, you know, if you build two homes, then you have to build a certain percentage as affordable. And if you can't build it, or you don't choose to build it in, as part of your project, and you don't include it in your project, so have a range of units that are affordable to a range of incomes, then you typically pay an in lieu fee. And, and that fee gets collected by the city, and you kind of collect a bunch of those fees, and then you go fund another project. And, and so somebody that is willing to build affordable housing, you, it can kick in those funds and maybe do more there. And, and sometimes that's even more efficient, frankly, than building, you know, five here and ten there. Sometimes you can do a better job of building, you know, a larger project where you, you maybe, maybe they're all affordable, or a higher percentage are affordable. But, you know, the city did a, a market analysis, and the gist of it was, is there's kind of a narrow area where market rate development can afford to build affordable units, say like ten or fifteen percent of those unit, at even a moderate income level. And typically gets to construction types and things like that. Parking is a big requirement in all zoning. It's a huge cost in all development, and often it has to do with the cost of providing that parking. And when you get to those higher densities, you think, well, you got more density, it should be more profit. The construction gets more expensive, particularly for building parking, and structured parking is very expensive. So you might go from a parking space that's fifteen thousand dollars a, a square foot or per space to fifty to seventy-five thousand, you know, per parking space. So you get more density, but you got to pay for that parking that's underground or in a garage, or things like that. So another long-winded answer, sorry, I'll let somebody else speak. But I hope that starts to answer your question.
That was great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions? Commissioner Wiley.
Well, usually, I'll, I'll have a whole laundry list, and everybody's kind of covered between the presentation and the questions that my fellow commissioners have asked, so I appreciate that. One of the things that kind of struck me was Table thirty-three, and that's on page forty-five, and that's the average monthly rent, and it was kind of broken down by the various cities. And so, you know, we hear a lot of discussion about the affordability of the city of Escondido. And, you know, according to this table, if you're kind of looking at your rent per square foot, we're, we're really on the lower end. we're really on the lower end. And so now that's for rent, you know, the for rent projects. Now we look at for sale homes, and I'm not sure where we rank with the rest of San Diego County. But the cost for a brand-new, single-family home, or any home for that matter, is extraordinarily high, it seems. And I don't know what we can do with the housing element to help bring that cost down other than provide more housing. So that the competition increases, with increased competition, you know what? Everybody's trying to get that house sold or that house rented. So the more units, the higher the competition, maybe it becomes more affordable. But anyway, it just struck me, it just struck me that we are kind of at the lower end in the county, or at least in North San Diego County, as far as rents, which, you know, I think is a good enough thing, you know, because at least here, maybe it's a little bit more affordable than, let's say, over in San Marcos. And we can, you know, keep some of our people here in Escondido that live here, and will continue to want to work here. But anyway, thank you. I think staff did a fabulous job, spent a lot of work, and I certainly appreciate all the effort.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rainey, do you have any comments or questions for staff, for our presenters?
Hopefully you can hear me now.
Yep, can hear you, yes.
Oh, good, good. I was speaking to myself for quite a while. No, I thought they did a great job, and everybody asked so many thorough questions. Thank you for that. Someone covered my question, so I am good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a few. You mentioned the buffer for the RENA requirements. I'm just curious. You said the eight, and for some reason, I missed that in the actual document. You mentioned ADUs as being in the buffer, as a potential buffer, whatever.
It's one of the things that if we have more ADUs constructed than we've assumed, those can kind of go into our bank of extra units there. So if you fall short on another site, those can kind of compensate.
Okay, so, but I mean, is there actually a list of the sites that actually would? Or, because we don't really have a buffer, right? That's my understanding, at least from looking at the data.
We've identified more sites than we need in terms of the number of units that we project. So we identify sites that meet a whole variety of criteria. We kind of project a certain number of units for each of those sites, and we total those up. And so I think we've got, as I mentioned, the RENA, the minimum is about 9,600. And we add about 10% to that, so we're over 10,000. I think we identified about 11,000 in our total inventory.
Okay.
So we've got some extra to work with there. And again, if we overproduce, great. Everybody's happy. We drive down the cost, hopefully, provide more opportunity. If you underperform on one area, those accessory dwelling units might kind of backfill a little bit.
So have you seen data that actually shows that ADUs do serve affordable housing?
Yeah.
Because there was reference, and I only ask this because there was reference in one of the comment letters that came in that said, there was some study at UCLA that said that less than 20% are actually, 20% of ADUs are not used for housing. So I was just curious about your take on that.
Yeah, there's a good study that was done by SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. And they tried to be comprehensive. Admittedly, the sample size was not as great as they would like.
Yeah.
And again, a lot of this is just happening in the last couple of years. So there really is a tremendous uptake on them. But what the study showed is that a lot of the units are actually good for extremely low incomes because they won't charge any income. It's often for family or a friend, needs a place to stay. Your mom or dad, or maybe mom and dad live in the accessory unit, and the kids live in the house. You know, that's typically a single-family house with an accessory structure. So some aren't charging any rent, some are charging low rent, maybe just to kind of cover the cost in utilities and food or whatever they might be sharing. And so, yeah, we're kind of looking at that. Hopefully that information will get better as more and more of these get built. Credit to Escondido. You guys are one of the first that are actually trying to track the income and the occupancy.
Yeah, I did notice the monitoring plan there.
Yeah, that's good. A lot of people aren't doing that, and so we're kind of at a loss. We're missing that data. So it's great to have that information. But yeah, so the SCAG study, which is pretty comprehensive, showed that, yeah, there was a good distribution. I forget the actual distribution, percentage-wise, between the very low, low, moderate, and above moderate, but it was fairly evenly distributed. And in some communities, they did it in two different areas. And I think in the LA area, they were getting, I think it was about 60% that would count as lower income for the accessory units. So it was good evidence.
Thank you for that. So I'm just curious also, in your preparation and assistance with furthering this document and the actual draft element, was there any reference or discussion of community land trusts or land value recapture as potential methodologies or ways to approach?
Yeah, we've talked about that. There hasn't been a tremendous uptake on that. It's a little more complicated.
It's definitely more complicated.
You need to kind of have an infrastructure there to get that going. I think it's a great idea. We were talking about it in another community where they really need something like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure actually that Escondido would be the most appropriate place for that, but I was just wondering if, as you reviewed policies, programs, et cetera, that this might actually be a potential.
I think it's a neat tool. You know, there's a lot of different tools and a lot of different programs. And so we try to kind of pick and choose to meet the, you know, what works with your community. That particular one seems to be very, it's most appropriate to a kind of very geographic area. So if you've got an area, a community that you can come in and fund and buy out, basically.
Right.
So that requires some big, deep pockets initially, or some tricky financing.
And on the East Valley specific plan, I guess my overriding concern and comment on this element generally is that it seems like, and I've said this to Adam several times now, is that we seem to be placing an awful lot of eggs in the East Valley specific plan basket with respect to meeting our RENA requirements. And it just strikes me as, this East Valley specific plan is actually a very small area. And it just, I'm just mentioning this and commenting on this for the record because I think that's the monitoring aspect and something that we're going to have to watch very carefully. Because I think it was, what, 2,000 units or something like that, that we were anticipating in the East Valley specific plan area through its,
It might even be a little bit more.
Through its rezoning effort.
I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I can look and see what we.
Right.
I've got it in here.
In any case, I just raised that as a red flag, if you will, for going forward, that obviously we're going to likely, I mean, I think this is an element that is pretty well-written. I just have a few concerns going forward, but not enough to.
Maybe give you a little bit of peace of mind is the, we've got enough in the downtown and South Center Parkway specific plans to cover our lower-income RENA, or almost all of it. And so in that regard, the East Valley is contributing to that, and that's great. But we've got, with that, we've got more than we need in the kind of lower-income RENA. So that's very good, because you can use those, those are easy to, you can always kind of work in the other direction and use those lower for the moderate or the above moderate. So if it doesn't really come to fruition, you've got the hard part covered, which is the lower-income ones. So if that doesn't pan out entirely as we hopes, as we hope, I think you're still be in pretty good shape.
And just as a point of reference, at least from the research I've done on this, it seems that 10 of the 18 jurisdictions in the county do have inclusionary housing ordinances.
A little higher than I thought.
FYI.
That's good.
All right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? We do have public, oh, sorry.
I just have one quick comment, maybe a question. I'm curious, because you brought up the ADU buffer. So do you have any idea? I know last year was COVID, so we just, I didn't want to compare for that year. But do you have any data showing from 2017 through 18 was the total amount of ADU for that year versus the 2018 and 19? So is that an increase, or is that a decrease in ADU? Because for the county of San Diego, I know the ADU decreased minus the COVID year. You're talking about 2018, 19. It's decreased.
Dan, I can speak to that.
Okay, great.
So in 2017 was the first year that the state kind of started tightening the screws on cities to loosen the screws on ADUs, right? So in that year, I believe we had about, let's see, 2018 was really when our ordinance got going. And I think we had about 16 ADUs that year. The next year, in 2019, we had about 30. Last year, we had 72. This year, we've already had 80 applications. So it's continuing that upward trajectory. It's actually very surprising that the county, they reduced their number last year. No, it was consistently just, I mean, it's doing this.
It's uptick, okay.
Yeah, actually, the county was going up as well.
Really?
Yeah, because we did the county's housing element. And that was a trend that we also tried to take advantage of. It's not as positive as yours, but they actually have quite a few, but it's a much bigger area. But their trend is up as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and just by comparison.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I have a question real quick.
Right, we have a few more too, Vice Chair Rainey, but please, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to ask about the mobile home rent review. I know that in 2020, we discussed in past putting a cap, right, on how much they can put up every year. And I just wanted to ask if anything in addition to that needs to be shared with our group on this?
So I can answer that question. So we have the normal that we've had for a long time, caps on rent increases, which are based on the change in the CPI. Additionally, over the last year, we put in vacancy control rather than vacancy de-control so that rents are capped on transfer from one coach owner to the next coach owner so that the maximum rent, the maximum increase of the rent can be up to 8% between homeowners.
Vice Chair Rainey, does that satisfy? Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes, I was involved in that. I just didn't know if there was anything else to be added. Thank you so much.
Okay. Commissioner Ramirez?
This is more of a general comment, so, you know, more because it was brought up along with one of the referencing Mrs. Borschman's kind of comments on this, on the cancellation of planning commission meetings. She cites, you know, planning commissions were canceled, and it seems like she wasn't aware of it. So just wondering, if the planning commission, we can somewhat respond to notifying public of when planning commission meetings are canceled with maybe more time in advance? And maybe that's a Joanne question?
I'm not exactly sure what she is necessarily referring to. I mean, we, our notices are posted on our website 72 hours before the meeting, the agenda is posted. We do our public notices in the paper 10 days, at least 10 days out. Usually I think it's Thursday, so 12 days ahead of the meeting, we send mailers for property-specific items. We also have a link on our webpage where you can sign up to receive public hearing notices by email. And I know that a number of people have taken advantage of that. So we do our, we do hold our meetings regularly, and, you know, second and fourth Tuesdays, unless there's a reason to cancel, and we do send cancellation notices as well.
Thanks, Adam.
Can I just add something real quick? We also do post it on our website under the notices. So if they're not posted, they're at least two weeks before the meeting, maybe 13 days before the meeting too, then we're not going to have a public hearing. So she can always, anybody can always call in too, to find out if we're going to be having a meeting. And we would know by then.
All right, we have two public comment, two public members who wish to comment on the housing element. I'm not sure it's on. Hang on.
All right. My name is Francisco Peña. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. 31-year resident here in Escondido. I live here, work, and recreate in the vicinity of the project. The city should require the project to build utilizing a local skilled and trained workforce. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In recent 2020 report titled "Putting California in the High Road: A Job and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board included that "Investment in growing, diversifying, and upscaling California's workforce can positively affect return and climate mitigation efforts." Moreover, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of local state-certified apprenticeship programs or a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollution reductions. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements for private development projects in their cities. Recently, the city of Hayward, Northern California, adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into their general plan and municipal code. Local skilled and trained workforce's requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impacts by minimizing vehicle miles traveled. Please consider putting local hire language on the general plan. We live here. We want to work here. I'm a skilled and trained carpenter by trade, 31-year carpenter, skilled craftsman. Father of three sons, my middle son is a first-period apprentice. Currently, he is working nights right now in San Diego. I used to coach my son's baseball teams, football teams, and soccer here in San Diego, I mean, here in Escondido. Due to the fact that there's a lot of work around here, and I wasn't able to solicit work right here, I had to go all the way to Orange County Riverside to work, which unfortunately, I had to stop coaching my son's baseball teams. So I do urge you to put that in your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have Mr. Doug Hicks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to commend Commissioner Don for her point on average median income. If you use the city of San Diego numbers, and I'll use 2019 because I know them off the top of my head. The city of San Diego is about $84,000. The city of Escondido is about $64,000. When you're talking about affordable housing, $20,000 a year is a massive difference. So to use regional numbers within a plan and not a city-specific number has a drastic impact. But I want to talk about something else. We throw around the term AMI, average median income. When you're talking about those who are building, constructing, and constructing units here in your city, the average construction worker makes 40% AMI. 40% AMI. They qualify for the housing that they're building. We're trying to build our way out of an affordable housing crisis with a workforce that qualifies for it. Let that sink in for a minute. You will not outrun this race. Why have we not talked about holding developers accountable for creating an impoverished community? What do the pro formas on these developments look like? 30% profit, 50% profit? And I begrudge nobody a good living. But if you're going to come into a city and you're going to pay a workforce 40% AMI and then say we need more affordable housing so that they can house their workers, that's wrong. How is Escondido going to get out of that hole? Why are we not talking about raising the wages? Skilled and trained workforce, local hire. Let's stop trying to build our way out of something, and let's start building our community. Let's start building community wealth. Let's actually take a look at what causes the problem of needing affordable housing. There's not a shortage of labor in California. There's a shortage of cheap labor in California. Workers who are willing to bust their ass for, what, $100 bucks a day? Undocumented workers being exploited? I see them in the tracks daily. Those undocumented workers who came here pursuing a dream, and all they're left with, if they're lucky, is poverty wages. Those are the people that need affordable housing. I hope they find their American dream, but I hope you hold the developers accountable. This plan has an opportunity today to say, that's not going to happen in Escondido anymore. You have an opportunity to say that we are going to have a skilled and trained workforce. We're going to have a local hire. We're going to have apprenticeship opportunities. We're going to allow dads to coach their soccer teams, and moms to go to their daughter's ballet recitals. We're talking about a community plan here. Let's talk about the community, not just the buildings. Let's take a good look at what AMI truly means to a working force. I hope you take all that into consideration. You can send the plan forward, but it should be a community plan, one that includes community wealth.
Thank you. All right, so this closes. All right, so this closes the public hearing for this item. Commissioners, do you have any discussion of the item before we do?
Chair Barbe, I believe that, I believe that there was written comments sent in to be read into the record.
My apologies, I forgot. There are written comments to be read into the record. Thank you so much.
Related to item G2, the housing element, PHG20-0030, an opposition to the housing element from Mitchell Si. Dear Planning Commission, on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, my office is submitting these comments on the City of Escondido Notice of Preparation of an Environmental Impact Report for the Escondido Housing and Community Investment Study and its State Clearing House Number 2021020263. The Southwest Carpenters is a labor union representing fifty thousand union carpenters in six states, including California, and has a strong interest in well-ordered land use planning, addressing the environmental impacts of development projects and equitable economic development. Individual members of the Southwest live, work, and recreate, excuse me, recreate in the city and surrounding communities, and would be directly affected by the project's environmental impacts. Commenter expressly reserves the right to supplement these comments at or prior to hearings on the project and at any later hearings and proceedings related to this project. California Government Code 65009B, California Publishing Something Public Residential Code 2117A, Bakersfield Citizens for Local Control versus Bakerfield 2004, and a few others that will be put into the record. Commenter incorporates by reference all comments raising issues regarding the environmental impact report, EIR submitted prior to certification of the EIR for the project. Citizens for Clean Energy versus City of Woodland 2014, 225 California 4th, 173, 191, finding that any party who has objected to the project's environmental documentation may assert any issue timely raised by other parties. Moreover, commenter requests that the lead agency provide notice for any and all notices referring or related to the project issued under the California Environmental Quality Act, which is SEQA. California Public Resources Code PRC21000 at something, and the California Planning and Zoning Law, California Government Code 65000-65010. California Public Resources Code Sections 21092.2 and 21167F, and Government Code Section 65092, require all agencies to mail such notices to any person who has filed a written request for them with the clerk of the agency's governing body. The city should require, sorry, time's up. Three minutes. Sorry, thank you.
There was just that one? Just that one for that item? Okay.
And for the record, that full correspondence will be placed in the written record.
And our apologies, but we try to keep it to three minutes for the verbal, for the oral writing. Okay, so we're back to any other commissioner discussion on the housing element or questions? Vice Chair Rainey, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll still make a comment here. Preparing the housing element, I think, is, it's almost as daunting a task as the climate action plan. We're trying to, but with the housing element, we're threading a needle here. You know, we've got requirements that are coming down from the state. We've got input that's coming from the public on what their desires are. And then the gentleman that spoke tonight about local workforce and higher wages. It's a tough needle to thread, to try and address all of these issues and come to some sort of middle-of-the-road compromise to provide for the housing that's needed for this community, you know, overall. It's a tough thing, you know? And I think that what staff has done here is taken all of this input and the rules and regulations that are, that come from the state, and prepared a document that was very thorough and comprehensive with backup documentation that supports that. So, you know, I have to commend staff and the consultant team for getting a job done in a very short period of time. That will be continuously reviewed and updated as we go forth in time with all the reporting numbers. You know, I agree, I think Escondido's done a good job with trying to create that balance with their housing inventory. And I hope we continue to do so. And I think by promoting the higher densities in our downtown areas, I think that's a good thing. And it'll provide additional housing that's really needed. But I really commend staff for what they've done in the past and what we're trying to do right now. And hopefully, we can continue to meet the needs of the city as we move into the future. So I can support this.
Commissioner Paul?
Can I make a motion?
Comments?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
So I make a motion that we recommend to the city council to approve the general plan housing element update.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, as long as the motion includes the additions by staff.
The additions as listed here, correct?
Yeah, Adam made that clear, that was part of the staff recommendation.
All right, I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wyler? Roll call?
Chair Barbe, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Rainey?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Ramirez? Thank you. Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
Thank you, the vote is six to zero to approve.
Thank you. All right, H. Current business, this would be, I don't think we have any written communications on this yet, no?
No, there's no written communications for the current business item.
And thanks again to staff and the consultant team for helping out. Okay, so our first item of current business is the plot plan for the Apollo Assisted Living Facility, planning case number PL21-0117. I believe there's a staff presentation on this.
Chair Barbe, I'd like to actually introduce Sean Nicholas. He's our principal planner. He showed up, got here about two months ago, been working with us. He's been a great asset, and he'll be making a presentation tonight.
A warm welcome to you.
Thank you, and it is wonderful to be here. I'm a North County, San Diego product, and so being able to come here and work in my home community area, it's a blessing. So very glad and look forward to working with all of you for many, many years to come. So with that, this is a proposed amendment to the Apollo Assisted Living Approval, primarily a plot plan for a minor expansion to the basement area. To reference both the general plan and the zoning designation of the site is specific plan. And here's an aerial showing you that is located across from Valley High School on East Valley Way Parkway, right there where El Norte becomes Hidden Trails. Here you can see the site plan. It's important to note that the access is still taken right there off of old Guito Grade Road. And I apologize, I'm sure I destroyed that name. I do apologize. But it is important to note that all the required forty-one spaces that are approved by Planning Commission back in January of 2020 is still provided, though it has been reconfigured. The overall project itself has been increased by three thousand ninety-four square feet, all within the basement area, bringing the total square footage of the project to sixty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-one square feet. The number of units and the number of beds remain seventy-eight and ninety-nine. That is unchanged from Planning Commission's approval, as well as the types and amount of amenities that are being provided. They are looking, the applicants are looking to make some amendments to the architecture, which is common as they move into construction documents. And we're still requiring some additional staff designer view to make sure that the vision as approved by Planning Commission back in January of 2020 results in what is developed in the field. Here in green, you can take a look and see where the three thousand-plus square feet is being added to the basement portion of the project site. As you can see, it's underneath the existing, or what will be the existing, upper floors. So there will be no physical exterior changes as a result of the addition. That green area highlighted is the added square footage, and it primarily serves for storage and laundry facilities that were originally not going to be on site. As a component of any project, we also looked at SEQA. There was a MND that was approved associated with this project in January of 2020. As a result of that approval, I should say, post the approval, on January fourteenth, the project has moved forward to construction documents, which always includes the fire master plan and the fuel modification plan, which has resulted in some additional changes to the brush management zone and impacts to potential biology. As a result, an additional biological review has been completed, and it's determined that no other impacts are being done on site that have not already been mitigated. Thus, the addendum is the appropriate vehicle to move forward. Just for a reference quickly, highlighted in red there, you can see the expanded brush maintenance zone. Again, this is being required by the City of Escondido Fire Department to ensure fire safety. Again, no new biological impacts are resulting. And the conditions of approval before you this evening includes a particular condition requiring a maintenance agreement with the adjacent property owner to provide access and continuing maintenance of that fire management zone. With that, staff does recommend approval of the PL21-0117 for the plot plan and addendum with the proposed findings and conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to address any of the commissioners' questions.
Questions? Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, hi, Sean, thanks. I actually had a lot of problems with this one. Can you talk about the original approval? Was there public notice in a public meeting?
Yes, on January fourteenth, 2020, there was a public hearing, as well as a public review process of the final MND. At that meeting, there was no members of the public that attended, and it was approved six oh by the Planning Commission.
So what was the noticing to the public for that?
It was associated with the public review of the MND, which is a typical thirty-day public review, as well as at least a minimum of the ten-day notification in the paper, which I believe interim director Feinstein had indicated is typically about twelve days in the paper as it's printed on Thursdays, as well as being noticed within mailing directly to individual property owners within three hundred feet of the site.
Actually, I clarify that, our code requires, and we mail to property owners within five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, I apologize.
Right, so how many people are within five hundred feet?
In front of me, I do not have that information. We can definitely provide that to you at a later time.
You have a ballpark?
It's, you know, it's not that dense of an area, so it's probably a fairly low number.
And so did you mail to that same area for the amendment that we're talking about tonight?
The proposed amendment does not require a public hearing, that's why it's under new business.
Okay, that wasn't my question.
No, no public hearing was submitted.
No notice was sent for this meeting because it's not, it's not a public hearing item.
Okay, so this kind of project with seniors, we would like to put that in, on a transit route? So what kind of transit available to this location?
I don't know off the hand where the transit, I'm sure it's off East Valley Parkway. Is that as a major thoroughfare through the community? But again, the purview tonight was just for the basement addition, and those types of issues were reviewed as part of the original approval last January.
Well, right, and that's why I said I struggled with this project a lot, because I tried to look up that information, and all it says is approved seven zero. There's, you know, the minutes don't say anything about what took place.
The staff report for that meeting would have been available and posted online prior to that meeting. I don't know, I don't know a lot of the detail on it, but what the meeting was, January fourteenth, so the staff report would have been posted the week before, and it should be on our website.
And it was also provided in your package this evening, the staff report from January.
Right, from, right, I saw it. Okay, thank you very much, Sean.
Absolutely, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
Can I answer Commissioner Paul's question real quick about the number of people that we sent the notice to? So when it was noticed for the January fourteenth meeting, we sent it to twenty-nine people within the five-hundred-foot radius. That is our, that's, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Vice Chair Rainey, do you have any questions or comments about this business item?
I do not.
You do not?
Thank you. I do not, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion? Do we need to approve it?
We don't have any speakers on this?
No, not to my knowledge.
The architect is available if there are any questions for him.
No, I don't think so. I don't think we have any. No questions at this time. Thank you, though, for coming, we appreciate it. All right, so is there a motion for, okay?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve PL210117 for the Apollo Assisted Living Facility.
And I second that?
Okay, roll call? Excuse me, Chair Barbe, how do you vote?
Approved.
Commissioner Don?
Approve.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Rainey?
Approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez? Sorry?
Approve.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, approve.
Thank you. The vote is six to zero with Commissioner Serrato absent to approve the Apollo Senior Living Facility.
And thank you for the presentation, we appreciate it. All right, and there are no more oral communications from the public or from anywhere else? No? The address of the Apollo?
We can have, we can have the planner, the principal planner, Sean, he can come and let you know that information.
Okay, so thank you. Okay, so planning commissioners, any comments going forward, questions about business or otherwise?
Yeah, I had one question. You know, we get this map for every meeting, and I like throw it away. I don't know the purpose of the map. But for tonight's event, they had Mercedes-Benz dealer over here by the school. So I don't know if this is a public document or something, but it's really wrong.
Inaccurate.
Yeah, that was, I think, leftover remnant from last week's, or last meeting. Apologize for that week.
So what, does this serve a purpose?
It shows where the different items that are on the agenda are. I mean, it didn't serve the right purpose tonight, but typically, yes, that's the purpose.
And if there are a significant number of items, sometimes it can be handy as a reference point, at least in my opinion. Other comments or questions? Vice Chair Rainey, do you have anything else for the good of the order?
I do not, thank you.
All right, I just have one report out. I'd like to report out on the subcommittee presentation to the city council last Wednesday. I presented to the city council, and Commissioner Serrato and Commissioner Ramirez were there as well. And I just wanted to mention, this was on the green infrastructure item as part of the work plan approval. And I assume that the work plan was approved, as I understood it, yes? But the green infrastructure item was not, is not approved. Tina, Councilwoman Tina Insco felt that the, while community engagement is important, which we talked about, she felt it was important that staff reach out to developers with, quote, "creative incentives for green installments", and that the current efforts for a building design guide would also help to address green infrastructure items. She also said to look for efficiencies in funding streams, because we talked a lot about funding streams on that action item. And she felt very strongly that there might be ways to use some of those funding streams to basically address the current and proposed items in the work plan, not reference, not relation to the green infrastructure. Councilmember Morosco basically thought that the green infrastructure item was redundant and that the overhead costs of additional plans and bureaucracy is not merited, and that the subcommittee seems to be relying on global assumptions about climate change. And Councilman Garcia felt that this activity is not within the purview of the Planning Commission to even present that the city council provides policy in the- Commission to even present that the city council provides policy and the Planning Commission is advisory. He believed that the messaging and the presentation intimated that the Planning Commission would be supervising city staff and setting policy changes. I personally refuted that observation and tried to explain otherwise. He believes that, he went on at some length about how this activity is somehow a part of a broader intent to stop development and only include open space and planning, which I didn't quite understand, but that's literally what he said. But he also, he did appreciate the attention to tree canopy and greening and said that he needs it in his district. Councilwoman Martinez supported the notion and recognizes the challenges of extreme heat events and has a personal concern because she herself suffers from heat exhaustion and heat migraines quite often. She also referenced the importance of establishing shelters at bus stops, that green infrastructure would be very helpful, that we all need shade. She does believe that green infrastructure is an equity issue, that all communities in Escondido deserve green streets, parks, and shade, and that right now there's not equity in this arena. She recognizes that greening is part of the Escondido Climate Action Plan and would provide and thought that some of these actions could actually be integrated into the Climate Action Plan, but that the Climate Action Plan is very general in nature, that she seemed to think there was a lot of placeholders without a lot of definition, and that somehow this type of activity could help to inform the actual strategies in the Climate Action Plan. She spoke a lot about the value of commissions and boards. She felt really strongly that it's important to have commission and boards as advisory and to inform and do these deep dives on policy background, and she referenced a previous commission that she felt that she served on and felt was very valuable and addressed this very type of action, which was the Community Services Commission that was sunset about the time she joined the council. So she was reacting to other people's statements, and she still believes that a climate... There was a lot of talk about the Climate Action Plan Commission that was approved. It seemed that a lot of the council members had some concerns about the establishing a climate commission, though that wasn't at all part of the presentation. And Mayor McNamara very much supported the idea and believes that it serves the Climate Action Plan well and that it would provide a lot of definition for that. Mayor McNamara called for a vote, and there were three noes and two ayes, so the motion failed. I just wanted to read that into the record for everyone. So, with that, I think if there are no more comments or... Director's report?
Yep. So, the only thing I was going to mention, we are not holding a meeting on the 10th of August. Our next meeting will be August 24th. I believe we have a couple of items tentatively scheduled, a couple of potential code amendment updates, one being an omnibus that we've been working on that's just going to kind of clean a few things up, and then the other potentially would be an update to our density bonus ordinance. We've been working on that. The attorney's office has been taking the lead in helping getting that going, and we should hopefully be able to get that in front of you guys at that next meeting as well. I don't know at this point if we're going to have any development projects to come forward on that date.
Okay. Anything else? All right, with that, we are adjourned.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. I apologize.
Okay.
I'm a little bit slow tonight, so I wanted to ask staff and also the Planning Commission a question regarding... I might have missed it in the general plan, but if I recall, was there an item on the general plan for the City of Escondido addressing the park and recreational plan at all, using the land to create? Then maybe I have to go back. The reason why I ask is I recall probably a couple of years ago before COVID, there was an item on the agenda that the general public submitted and request that the City of Escondido take a look at creating a pool for the school, for the sport program. There was a huge concern regarding that the City of Escondido didn't have the pool appropriate enough to support the swimming program and also the water polo program. And the majority of the sport create, encourage students to maintain a 3.0 average. But that program, it's not doing very well. It's number one, the City of Escondido can't, we don't have a pool for the school from Orange Glens, San Pasquale, all those students that can come and start practicing swimming and also water polo. So, the general public, I believe there was a presentation that public noticed, and they all came and expressed a concern and request to see if the city take a look at the land currently that we have to create a recreational swimming pool for the swimming program and also for the water polo. And here's the reason why they wanted it. Number one, all the students involved in those sport have to go outside the City of Escondido. They would have to go to San Rancho Bernardo High School or a little bit further for their practice, and the practice, they can't, they don't have the space available. So you're looking at 20 to 30 student, 3.0 students would travel from Escondido to Rancho Bernardo to utilize other school swimming pool from 9 until 10 o'clock PM nightly. And those students maintain a 3-point or 4-point, from 3 to 4.0. So, the parents got together and then present some, the need for the City of Escondido to take a look at that item, and I believe that was a couple of years ago, maybe if we could take a look at that item again and then make a determination whether would that activity be something that we should be considered, because we're promoting sport, we're keeping the kids active, and then if we don't have it, that's mean we're punishing the parents, and we're punishing the kids that wanted to have the swimming pool in the City of Escondido, and we have the opportunity to do that.
So, I guess the first thing I'll state is that we can't really have any discussion on this because it's nothing that's been agendized. Beyond that, though, I'm not sure that this is Planning Commission's purview. I believe it's probably something more appropriate for our Parks and Recreation Department, and then they would be able to work with our city manager's office and potentially the city council.
Yeah. Thank you. I would just merely ask the question.
On that issue, and it is kind of a point of order, I guess, there are some things going on right now with, you know, potentially getting a competitive pool for water polo swim meets, all of those things. And I don't know if I can talk about it here right now.
It's not agendized, so we can't.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, then. Thank you so much for your input, and this meeting is adjourned.